Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome on everyone here to this new and exciting meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. I think this might be the first time we've had to reschedule a commission meeting due to snow for as long as most of us can remember, anyway. I'd like to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we get to have some very exciting swearing-ins of new commissioners and re-elected commissioners.
My name is Sandra Hansen. I'm one of the Circuit Court Judges for the Second Judicial Circuit, which encompasses Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. I'm very honored and privileged to be allowed to be here today to swear in your returning and new commissioners. This is a great honor and privilege that is bestowed upon judges like myself. As you can see, I'm not James Power, I'm Sandra Hansen, but it still counts. So, we're going alphabetically, and the first commissioner to be sworn is Gerald Benega, so I will raise my right hand and ask him if he could do so as well. And just please repeat after me. I, Gerald Benega...
I, Gerald Benega.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of South Dakota.
Of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will...
And that I will...
Faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Today's the fifth?
I'm not sure what the date is. Fifth?
Yes. Just to the side. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Benega.
Thank you.
Alphabetically, our next commissioner to be sworn is Jen Blidenberg. Ms. Blidenberg? If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jen Blidenberg...
I, Jen Blidenberg...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of South Dakota.
Of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will...
And that I will...
Faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. Hold that for you. Joe, if you could raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Joe Kipley...
I, Joe Kipley.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of South Dakota.
Of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will...
And that I will...
Faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Can you sign that? We have one final order of business before we let the commissioners take over. Amanda Halsey would like to be ceremonially sworn in as the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds. Okay, so if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Amanda Halsey...
I, Amanda Halsey...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of South Dakota.
Of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will...
And that I will.
Faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Register of Deeds.
Of Minnehaha County Register of Deeds.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's all that you need from me, and more, probably. So I invite the commissioners to take over once again.
Let's take one picture. Good picture of the pride.
We're gonna take one picture of the new...
The new room.
The new formation.
Somebody says, "Do you have a picture?" We have one.
Congratulations. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you for the friends and family that came, because that's an important event. It always makes you think to hear that oath of office and reflect again on what our commitments are up here. Sadly, while we've done the fun part of our meeting, I need to share some sad news. John Crittinen passed away on Tuesday. John was a senior highway maintenance worker who'd been with the Highway Department for almost 30 years. He was well-known throughout the county. Our thoughts and prayers are with John's family and his friends and his coworkers. It's been a hard week. He was one of the many that have been out moving snow for many, many days, as we all know. So, anyway, we wanted to make a special note of that loss. All right, that moves us into regular business. I would consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So, Benega?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Blidenberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next is selection of a commission chairperson for 2023.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Gene Bender to chair.
I'll second that.
So, motion and a second. Now's your chance to throw darts. All right, hearing none. I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blidenberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, next item is selection of the commission vice-chair for 2023.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Dean Kerski for vice-chair.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I have a long acceptance speech, if you'd be willing to hear it.
Do you want us to vote you in first, before you give the acceptance speech?
Just have the vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blidenberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. The next item is a designation of official county newspapers for 2023.
Good morning, Tyler Clack, Commission Office. Annually, the county has to designate at least two county newspapers, or three, sorry, three or more legal newspapers every year. It's been a tradition, I suppose, since 2019 where the county has designated four separate newspapers. For you today are four requests to be considered from the Argus Leader, the Brandon Valley Journal, the Garrettson Gazette, and Minnehaha Messenger. I believe we have representatives from most and not all of these. I know the Minnehaha Messenger was able to get here because of the roads, but the information in your packet shows some of the history of their distribution, their rates, and the budget related to publishing items for the county.
Any questions for Tyler? With the individuals from Commissioner Kerski?
Go ahead, if you want to go to the...
Representatives from the different newspapers have any item things they'd like to say?
Good morning, Jill Meyer from the Brandon Valley Journal. I also want to say we've appreciated your past support of naming us as one of your legal newspapers, and we hope you will do it again. I just want to comment on your, I haven't been here since this new meeting space has been available, but what a beautiful space, and I just look forward to working with you again.
Thank you.
Good morning, Garrick Moritz, editor and publisher of the Garrettson Gazette. Thanks for having me here. It's been good working with the county for the last several years, and hope to continue the tradition. If you guys need anything specially published, Kim will tell you that I'll come through and I'll answer the phone, happily to do so. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Kerski?
I was just gonna say, by statute, we only need to declare one newspaper, but for the benefit of all the citizens of the county and because these folks do such a fine job of disseminating the information throughout the county to all the rural communities, we changed a few years ago to support all of these local publications, and I would make a motion for the Brandon Valley Journal, the Garrettson Gazette, the Minnehaha Messenger, and the Argus Leader all be recognized as our official county newspapers.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Can I have a discussion?
We can have public comment, if you'd like to come forward and public comment, that'd be fine.
Gary Meyer, Minnehaha County. I'm not sure how this works. I know you select the newspapers. I don't know if the newspapers select their own reporter to report for them, but if they do, I would like to see you reconsider who you select for a newspaper, or do something with a reporter that reports to these newspapers. The county reporter, I've been reading his columns for years, and his reports are more opinion than editorial, than factual. I know from our, you all know I belong to the South Dakota canvassing group, and he has not given us, when we report things, he has a tendency to put his slant on it. He doesn't report the facts. He twists the truth, and if he is chosen by this commission, I think the commission needs to hold him accountable. His title is county reporter, and if he's reporting for the county, I think he needs to stick to the facts only, not opinion.
Thank you. Just as a point of clarification, this is just for the official county newspaper where we publish our minutes and other official notifications that were required by law to publish. Any other public comment this morning? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blidenberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, item six is to take notice and record the non-elected department heads for 2023. I don't believe there's any discussion on this, any action that needs to be taken. It's just a matter that we're required to take notice of that each year at our annual, first annual meeting. Okay, all right, so that takes us to item seven, which is the appointment of the Minnehaha County Coroner for 2023. Is there someone here to present on that?
I'll give it a shot. Tyler Clack, Commission Office. Each year, we ask you to appoint the coroner from Minnehaha County. Dr. Kenneth Snell has done this for a number of years, and we'd ask you to consider his appointment again for 2023.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Kerski?
No question. Dr. Snell's been, done a great job, and I would nominate him to be the county coroner, or nominate to appoint him as the county coroner. I think that's the right way to say it.
All right, so motion, is there a second?
Second, Kipley.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Kerski?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blidenberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item eight, which is to establish the 2023 salary for Minnehaha County Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Mueller, Commission Administrative Officer. SDCL 7-7-5 requires that the board establish their salary at the first regular meeting of the year. For background, we do have up, if we can open that briefing memo, Trish would be great, for your information, we do list the last four years of what the salary has been. These numbers do not include the additional $1,500 for the chairperson in recognition of their additional duties. Currently, in 2022, the dollar amount you received was $31,262.40, and people are wondering why that's such an odd number. We need to have it divisible by 26 pay periods, is why that ends up happening. So, for your consideration today, we've prepared three resolutions. You have not met as a board before, so you've not had the opportunity to discuss this, so we took a shot in the dark and prepared three resolutions for you, one at 5%, one at 10%, and one at 12%. So, I would open that up for your discussion and determination of what you see your salaries as being for 2023. I would note, before you go into this, that Minnehaha County Commissioners do not receive health insurance, nor do they participate in retirement programs. The health insurance, there are some counties that do provide that. We have not provided that, so that is not a cost or a benefit, a cost to the county or a benefit that you receive. And commissioners differ from other elected officials in that they serve as both the legislative and administrative bodies. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Carol? If not, I think I'll ask for public comment first, and then we can go into discussion. If there's anyone here for public comment on the Minnehaha County Commissioner's salary, this is your opportunity to talk about the Minnehaha County Commissioner's salary only. Okay.
Good morning. Leah Anderson, Minnehaha County resident and taxpayer, and your newly-elected auditor, not sworn in yet. I find it interesting that you get to prove your own salary, and I see no mention where you talk about any education work experience or newly-elected official experience. There's no base salary mentioned for the county commissioners for newly-elected officers. So, I will continue this conversation in public comment, but I just want to mention that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Go ahead and come forward.
Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County resident, and I would just like to also point out that it seems odd to me that all the commissioners, even though we've got two that are brand-new, would be starting at the same salary as those that have experience. If that is the trend, then I don't understand, again, in comment, why some salaries are being cut because of lack of experience and so forth. So, I just want to make that, make that comment known. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, don't see anybody else coming forward. Then I'd open it up to the commissioners for discussion. Commissioner Kerski?
I would agree, it is odd, and probably even a little uncomfortable that we get to approve our own salary, but that is set by statute. We are all equals as commissioners. No one commissioner has any more weight or authority in any matter than any other commissioner, including the chair of the commission. That's really the hard-working position, but it has absolutely no more authority than any other commission, commissioner. Historically, my six years, is historical to me, the county commission has approved salary increases for other department heads, for our rank-and-file employees of the county, and typically, the county commission has approved a salary increase that has been, at times, less than half of what we have approved for other employees, department heads, et cetera, half as a percentage. I think we've been very prudent in what we pay ourselves, and if we compared our salary to counties in the region and what the commissioners are paid, we are paying ourselves considerably less than what comparable counties do pay. You know, we have three options, 5%, 10%, or 12%. And there can be other options, too, but just as a point of illustration, I guess, the commission-approved pay increases that, with step increases, are probably north of 14% for our employees, our department heads, and other elected officials that retain their office. So, you know, for us to go even at a 10% range, we would still be considerably less than what we have given all the other employees of the county. Everybody knows what inflation's been for the last couple of years. 10% for, over the last two years, would pretty much keep us in line with what is happening nationally. So, just my two cents, and to start the conversation, I guess.
Any other comments or discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll just throw out a few other things for the, since the public, as we're comparing different positions, we get some apples and oranges distinctions going on, sometimes two, as this is a part-time position, the theory of an opportunity cost. I know some of my colleagues have other businesses during the day that they're sacrificing to be here, and they are giving up other opportunities in the private sector. We need to be encouraging people to run for public office. I know I'm, I've got big shoes to fill in the seat that I'm sitting in. I was advised by Commissioner Barth that this is one of the things, that yes, it's uncomfortable to raise your own salary or your four colleagues' salaries, but you have to do it, otherwise you fall behind. I think he's, he pointed to some other local government entities that were not keeping in line with that, and then it was very difficult to catch up later. It's easier to make small increases, like Commissioner Kerski said, that these are not as big of increases on the table now that we've done for some other areas of the county, but I think we have some duty to, as an institution, as the county commission, to keep the salaries in line.
Other comments?
I'll make a, just a brief comment. I don't disagree with any of the conversation that's just been had. I like something that ties together with our budget increase, if you will, with the growth of the revenue source, and our CPI has limited to that 3% plus the growth of the county property values, which has another about 3.1%, so that's closer to the 5% that we discussed in our budget hearings, and I would hope that we would consider that.
Any other comments? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for conversation for the 5% increase. There is not a lot of dollar difference, frankly, between 5 and 10, so I'll just stick with the 5% at this point.
Is there a second?
A second 5%.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Further discussion? Lots of thinking. Any discussion?
Just for the sake of conversation, I'm just gonna let my colleagues know I can live with 5% or 10%, was the two, that I was kind of in-between, so absolutely defer to my colleagues on which direction to go from there, but I know we've got 5% on the table.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Blidenberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, so that takes us to the end of our special business, and we'll launch into what would be our normal business. So the first item would be a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent of the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Blidenberg, thank you. All right, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Blidenberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to regular business. Item 17 is an item to authorize the chair to sign the Juvenile Justice Collaborative MOU. Carol?
Good morning, Commissioners. You know, this changing dates really challenges us in terms of pulling together the meeting with some different changes that are out there. And before you today, I'm just gonna pull this up a second. For your consideration today is the authorization to approve the chairman to sign the Juvenile Justice Collaboration MOU. In 2013, the Minnehaha County Commission approved signature of a MOU to form a juvenile justice collaborative. The collaborative has been meeting ever since. Co-chairs Judge Robin Howman and Commissioner Cindy Heiburger, former Commissioner Cindy Heiburger, along with the committee members, have drafted an updated MOU. The action requested is approval for signature for the MOU for the chair. The Juvenile Justice Collaborative was very active in the beginning years and worked together to develop juvenile justice programs and opportunities for collaboration regarding joint processes and policies. They've been meeting on a regular basis, looking at collaboration, and working towards common goals. So, it's an updated MOU, and we would request authorization to sign.
All right, any questions for Carol? I appreciate her pinch hitting for Judge Dammgard. Commissioner Kerski?
Who from the county's board sits on that? Has that been Commissioner Heiburger up to this point? Okay, okay.
It's my understanding this really just documents what they've been doing and kind of established the, there's no funding for this, it's just a group that is kind of formally organized to discuss juvenile justice issues. I see our state's attorney nodding his head, so, thank you. Any other questions?
Move approval.
So, motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski?
Aye.
Blidenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 18, which is to consider motions correcting the abatement amount on parcel 12058. Auditor Kite, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. I'm here for you today to ask for the correction of the abatement on parcel 12058. On December 20th of 2022, the commission approved a property tax abatement at parcel in the amount of $1,854.02. That amount represented the full 2021 property tax liability. Upon our further review, it was discovered that the applicant qualified for one-month abatement and should have been awarded an abatement amount of $157.48. So the Auditor's Office is seeking the commission approval for motion on the following actions. We'd ask you to rescind the 2020-22 approval that... We'd ask you to rescind the 2020-22 approval of that abatement on that parcel 12058, Veterans' exemption 10-440 for the amount of $1,854.02, and approve an abatement for that parcel 12058 Veterans' exempt PT 10-440, December 21, property taxes of $157.48.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the auditor? Commissioner Benega.
My only question, Ben, do we do these separately, or do we, can we do it as a total?
I would defer to the state's attorney for direction on that.
We were informed that we could do either, so, whatever you choose, Commissioner Benega.
If I could add that in my head quickly, I'd be great, but unfortunately, I can't do that that quick. You wanna give me the total, or do you have that total?
Well, the, we're asking you to rescind the original one of the $1,854.02, and then approve the corrected amount for $157.48.
In my head, that's $2,011.50.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, we're taking away an abatement.
See, I told you I couldn't add in my head.
You could just say, I, I make the motion that the auditor suggested.
I would make a motion that the auditor suggested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions? Are we clear? More, more or less? All right, is there any public comment on this item? All right, then, a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, the next item is to establish polling locations in Minnehaw County for the 2023 election cycle.
Yes, so state statute requires the Auditor's Office to name the polling places each year, at the beginning of each year. So, I'm here to ask you to, for that. For this year, the resolution would incorporate changes to the polling places. One, for the city of Hartford, they've asked that that precinct, which we refer to as VPO 7, be relocated to the Gage Building, which is their senior citizen, senior citizen center in Hartford, which is at 119 North Main Street in Hartford. That new location is owned by the city of Hartford. The previous polling location was located at City Hall, which is adjacent to this new location. The new location meets all ADA requirements. And then additionally, we would ask you to approve the precinct at the Minnehaw County Administration Building for our special election that we're holding for the conservation district supervisors. But otherwise, all other polling locations are unchanged from our previous resolution.
Any questions for the auditor?
Madam Chair, I, I would have one set of questions just on, we might have to do this as just a matter of course here at the beginning of the year, but has there been any discussion or thought about changing the number of polling locations? I know when I served on the Sioux Falls District and Commission to help create the city council districts for the city of Sioux Falls, it can be kind of cumbersome when some of the precincts are so large, it's hard to, to move them around to make new districts. Anyway, any thought given to that? Is that something that we could do, work with you at a later time on?
Yeah, so, the Auditor's Office is in the process of reviewing all the precinct boundaries and locations. We recognize that some have grown over the years with the population, so we're looking right now at doing that, and we'd probably come back to the commission sometime later this year with recommendations on new boundaries, changes, maybe more or less precincts, but once we kind of get through that process, we'll have a recommendation.
And I understand there's some trade-offs involved there, because is it fair to say you're having trouble finding staffing and volunteers for the number of precincts we have now, and it creates its own challenges, but just look into the future?
Yeah, that's always the challenge, right? Not only finding people who are willing to work at those precincts, but finding locations that are willing to be a precinct voting place. So, those are always challenges, and those, those are things that we'll consider as we go through that, but yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Karski.
You know, I understand the challenge. I mean, churches with polling places seems like a conflict, schools that have school in session, and we're trying to run elections in gymnasiums, the limited number of public buildings that you can have. So, I mean, the challenge is real, and it's every year or two years, whatever it is, I respect the work that you have to do in it, and it's a lot of, lot of phone calls and a lot of bartering and negotiating, and thank you for the efforts that go into that.
Well, we appreciate the public's willingness to work with us. They, they recognize the importance of this function, and yeah, you know, the public's been very good about trying to accommodate us, but we do have a lot of challenges in getting those locations.
Not like the old westerns where they'd close the bar, and everybody went to the bar to vote until the polling place closed.
I mean, our lives were, this process was probably a little bit easier when the schools allowed us to use their locations, but, you know, several years ago, with security concerns, they've kind of backed off, so now it forces us to be a little more creative in finding locations.
Anything else? Public comment? Is there anybody here who'd like to speak on, public comment on this item? All right, I would take a motion.
I would make a motion to establish the election locations that have been printed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 20, which is to consider a resolution establishing rates of pay for election workers and polling location rental rates. Mr. Kite?
Yes, so, again, as required by statute, we're, Auditor's Office is required to set the pay rate for election workers each year at the first of the, at the first of the year. So, the resolution I have before you does that, a couple things I'll note. We've tried, as I, I worked with the HR, our human resources office here to kind of determine what would be the appropriate rate for most of our workers. And considering the amount of time that the, people that work at the, the polling places is just at least 12, probably 13, 14 hours, tried to come up with something that's like around $15 an hour, which seems to be kind of our new minimum wage here in the city. That's how we've established those. So, for the precinct superintendent, we're recommending $250 a day. That's about $18 an hour for that superintendent. Those people have more responsibility, are responsible for the other precinct, precinct workers on that, at that location, and just have that, you know, administrative responsibilities, who are recognizing that. And then the $200 a day, and when I calculate, it's, it comes out to about $15 an hour for what they put in. And I just think that's appropriate. I think, you know, as we talked about, we have challenges getting people to, to work the election. This kind of, to me, recognizes the effort that they have and time that they have to put in, and helps us attract people. We've made some changes for absentee precinct superintendent, paying them $18 an hour, and the absentee board making them 16. So, this is a change from, we changed, we paid the absentee precinct superintendent $16 an hour before, and now we're paying them $18 an hour again. Kind of reflects their level of responsibility. Absentee board, $16 an hour. The rest of those kind of remain the same, with the exception of the, the rate of rent for the polling locations. Previously, we had paid polling locations $100 a day. I thought that was a little bit less than probably what, what we're asking of these places. Again, with the challenges that we have in getting locations to help allow us to use their facility for a day, I thought $200 a day, a flat rate, would be more appropriate. So, those are the changes for this resolution and for this year that I'm recommending.
Thank you. Any questions for Auditor Kite? Had any of that? Any public comment on this item? All right, I consider a motion.
Make the motion to approve with comment. Second, that.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Oh, sorry.
Ben, how many election workers did you have?
We had over 500 election workers.
And a big thank you to every one of them, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was quite a challenge.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that takes us to our final item of regular business, Consider Bid Results and a Motion to Reject All Bids for MC 22-13, 50-330-026 Bridge Rehabilitation. Steve, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Grown, Highway Superintendent. We opened bids on December 14th. It's a deck overlay for a structure north of Sherman on Highway 103. The little bid was Midwest industrial builders out of North Dakota. They were nearly 50 percent above the estimate. The issue here is it's a deck overlay with a low slump concrete. It's a very specialized product, and there weren't too many people willing to bid on the project. We're recommending that we reject all bids. The price that it came in at, it's almost half of a replacement value, which doesn't make this cost, cost efficient. So, right now, we're looking at other options, including possibly adding it to another project next year and rebidding it later. It was a South Dakota Bridge Improvement Grant project, and we have four years to use the grant funding.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Steve? Fortunately, this has been a bit of a trend, but this is particularly breathtaking to see that difference, so. Anybody for public comment? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to reject all bids on the project listed.
Is there a second?
Second, Kipli.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Steve. All right, so this is our opportunity for general public comment. If you'd like to comment about something that's not on the agenda today, this is your opportunity.
Good morning, Leah Anderson again. Newly elected auditor. I mentioned earlier about base salaries, and it seems like, Jean, you were quoted as saying that it was okay to place myself and Amanda at the 2022 base salary amounts because we had no experience as elected officials. I would like to have you consider that I do have qualifications that probably meet or exceed the current auditor's qualifications. No one has reached out to me ever, except for, I will exclude Jen from that, because we did get to know each other a little bit during the campaign process. I too graduated from USD with a major in accounting, and I've worked for 49 years since the age of 15 in the business and accounting industry. I have never been let go from a job with the exception of one, and I worked for that company, it was Northwestern Corporation. The reason that I was dismissed from that job was because I uncovered some fraud and irregularities in their accounting structure, where they thought I would be a better fit elsewhere, instead of exposing them. I have great integrity, a lot of job experience. Every accounting function that's listed on your website, on the main page that talks about what the auditor does, I have done. The only things I haven't done is hold an election and approve liquor licenses. So, I feel like my qualifications far exceed those that are currently in that office. One other thing, you, you talked quite a bit about keeping salaries in line with inflation and making sure that salaries of elected heads of departments are that, that are above their employees that they supervise. And you've decided to place me at a 2022 base salary of $89,232, which is 64 percent of the current auditor's salary of $137,529. I'm pretty sure when the people elected me as auditor, they felt like I was qualified, or they would not have elected me. And it's safe to say that my qualifications are deserving of the same salary as the current auditor. And since most of those functions are accounting-related, and I have more accounting experience, that's why I believe that I may have more experience in the accounting field than the current auditor had when he began. He also did not have any experience. He was appointed by most of you, not all of you, because two of you are new. And I realize that you guys, you did not support me in my election, you did not want me elected. So, there's probably a little bit of tendency to sway that decision when you're giving the current auditor a 14 percent pay increase this current year for his remaining 2023 salary, and you have cut the salary that I would start at and did not increase that salary at all. So, I just would like for you to review that again, and to reach out to me and find out my qualifications and get to know me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Gary Meyer, Minnehaw County. I would like to support Leah on her comments. I totally agree with her. I just have one question. Why did you give the current auditor a $17,000 raise for the remaining couple months in office?
Anyone else for public comment? If you could identify yourself, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good morning, Mike Osted, Minnehaw County. Just following, being a lifelong county resident, I appreciate the work that's been done, especially in the election cycles and huge voter turnout, and some changes that we've had with redistricting and precinct changes that were talked about. But I believe the ultimate bosses have spoken by electing Leah as a replacement. That's evolved Ryan elections, and incumbents, to replace an incumbent is quite a feat. And she did that. I would also like to vouch for Leah as working with and being within a not-for-profit organization that she managed for years and did well. Further, whether there's qualifications, which I believe she has, and not that the other one that got beat out is, as an incumbent, is not qualified, but there were a lot of problems. And as a precinct committee person, I was watching the election and staying late, and I'm glad that there's the 200 people in the election that were managing and being poll workers, had to stay a lot of long hours, so I'm glad to see they're getting paid. But there was a lot of mismanagement going on in Valley Springs and Hartford and some of those precincts in the primary election. So, whether there's qualifications or not, the, the record has been quite poor. And I think we have some fresh, new, we're bringing in a woman that has experience, and she's getting her pay at a drastic reduction of base. I just ask that you would consider that, and as a character witness, Minnehaw County resident, I would be in definite support for Leah at the rate she should be coming in and deserving.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if there's no more public comment, that takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Karski.
This morning before our meeting, I met with our Director of Equalization and kind of discussed a few things in the department, specifically related to building permits and how we could try to streamline the process between building permits and then assessment values, so that it could be more of a automated method, I guess. I was told by Chris Lilla, the director, that he gets a stack about, and he held his hand up about a foot and a half off the table of building permits every year, and he said, there's no consistency between any of the municipalities, the city of Sioux Falls, all the smaller communities, the the smaller communities, the county, on what a building permit looks like and how that process could be more smoothly done. So I encouraged him to, since he is the end user, I mean, he's not the one that writes the building permits, but I remember when I was in the city council several years ago that the planning commissions actually got together and had changed all their forms to have one form so that everybody uses a standardized method of reporting this type of data. It would make his job easier, it would help government operate more efficiently and smoothly, and maybe we could get to the point where we could automate some of that stuff. It doesn't replace the, the boots on the ground of the assessor's office going out and actually reviewing properties, but when it comes to the building permits, it would probably make a lot of sense if we could somehow light a fire under the right area so that we could have a unified or a simplified system that everybody operates under. So just a conversation that started and trying to move it forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So are there any non-action commission items for discussion?
Madam Chair, I've just got one comment. As a new commissioner, the meeting moves real fast on me, so I have to just insert a comment on an item we approved earlier, was just the designation of the official county newspapers, and I just feel compelled to say something because I just took the oath of office to support and defend the Constitution. And I just want to make it very clear that as long as I'm a part of this institution, Minnehaha County, we're not going to favor or disfavor any reporter or newspaper entity under the First Amendment. They have the freedom of speech, they can write up whatever they want to write up about what I'm saying, they can blast me, whatever. I, that is a very important function in our civil society, and I think some of these rural newspapers do a great job of it and keep some of our civil society in our smaller towns going. So I'm proud that, as we've designated these county newspapers to do what is essentially just a ministerial function of official notices. But what they write in their opinion columns, their reported columns, they can say whatever they want to say, and I just want that to be very clear, that this institution is not going to be picking reporters that get to come into this room. And so I thank anybody that shows up from the public and wants to give public comment, whether you're a reporter or just a citizen, but I just felt compelled that I had to say that. Thank you.
Commissioner Benega.
This last couple of weeks has been an incredible effort by the Sheriff's Department, by the Highway Department, and Emergency Management, and I hate just selecting those three, because everybody had extra work to do with a storm, and I just want to say thank you to all of you because this has been an unusual event that you, as leaders, have managed very well. And obviously, Steve, you had extra responsibilities with your Highway Department issues. Feel very badly about the staff member who passed away, but you guys sacrificed a lot of time and effort, and as far as I am concerned, you guys did a fantastic job. We couldn't have asked you to do any more than you already did, so thank you.
Commissioner Karski.
Next Tuesday, no commission meeting, but we will have the first meeting of the Financial Action Network, and I think we have, what, ten or eleven, eleven members of the Financial Action Network. These individuals are CEOs, CFOs, involved in school districts and budgeting processes. We did this last five years ago, and we took a, basically a five-year look ahead at what, you know, our budgets could look like, where we're spending our money. You know, a few things that were kind of surprising with the amount of money being spent on the criminal justice, it's like 50% of our total budget goes to courts and law enforcement and jail and so forth, and, you know, Minnehaha County employs about 76 attorneys, I believe it is, which is a large amount of attorneys when you look at the state's attorneys, the public defenders, the public advocates. So, you know, we're just taking a long, hard, deep dive or look at the finances. The next five years are going to prove challenging to this commission as a body when it comes to budgeting. We're at about 25% of our budget is financed by opt-outs, and looking ahead, that number's probably going to grow, and we just need the support of the community, the leaders, people who have finance backgrounds, and just their support in making this go forward and making it work properly. So looking forward to it, and I'm appreciative of the people that were generous with their time, because it's going to be at least three meetings of a couple hours each, and it's going to be a lot of work.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, I would agree, we're all very excited about the Financial Action Committee. It was when it was originally constituted, when Commissioner Karski first came on the commission, it was very helpful to help us really get our arms around some of our finances, and we expect great things this time around, because as he said, there are no end to challenges that are coming up. And I also want to just echo Commissioner Benega's sentiments and send out our great thanks to all of our first responders and our Highway Department, the folks that have been really having to work a lot harder over the last, what's that, the snowiest winter so far or something like that on record. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. One, wow, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone.